We are going. Thank you. We are going to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, November 10th for the town of Ashford, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Um, first order of business is call to order in the seating of alternates. Okay. We have no alternates to be seated. Doug Jenny is our single alternate after the most recent election. And let me just close something down here. Unless you want to hear my dog barking. And he was unable to, I think he was unable to attend, but also he was unable to be sworn in prior to the meeting. He'll be doing that on Wednesday. To that end, I want to welcome a newly elected member to the board, Michael Pepin. Uh, I believe he's showing up under Val Pepin. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, Mike falls under that same category as Doug in that he did not get sworn in prior to the meeting. So he'll be sitting in and auditing with us and not able to vote, but be taking the information in. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
We look forward to your input with the next meeting in December. Uh, also congratulating Nord uh, and Steve, Steve Pesh and Nord Yakalov. Uh, incumbent members that were reelected to the board. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and effort. Uh, and your input to the board. It's greatly appreciated. And the other side of the coin, though, is I'm sorry to say, is that Luther Brush has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission, effective 11/4/2025. We want to thank Luther for his time, his input and counsel to the commission for the time he spent, both as an alternate and as a regular member. So. That being said, no new members have joined at this point. Other members have joined. Correct, Mike?
Uh, nope, nobody else.
All right, just looking for, we'd be looking for Tom. All right, very good. So, um, with that, we have what we have. The group is here. We have a quorum of six uh, members uh, for voting and we'll work with that. Looking for the approval of minutes of the 10:14:25 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Jerry, thank you. Who was here? Is there a second to the motion?
I can second that.
Steve, thank you. Okay, just reminding that it was a very light quorum last month. So those that were in attendance are able to vote on the approval. Those not would need to abstain. Do I hear a all those in favor of approving the minutes from last month? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That sounded unanimous there. Those not in attendance, such as myself, I need to abstain.
Mark Shunova abstains as well.
Mark abstains. And I think that's it. Yeah, Jerry was there, Steve was there, Nord was there, and Janet. And Alex, of course, is no longer on the commission. So that as from what I understand with the abstentions and the uh, majority of the attending members, those minutes will pass and are approved. Uh, number three on our hit parade.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me, before we go any further, um, it occurred to me just a little bit ago, since we're starting a new committee, do we need to uh, elect officers again?
Uh, that's a good question. When did we elect last time? Was it, um?
I believe that with every two years with the election that we um, elect officers.
With the municipal election. Okay, I always get confused as to whether it comes in or not. Um. We don't have it on the agenda at this point. For doing such and um, I don't know if we're breaking any laws by not doing that, or we just do not following bylaws by not having that.
You're not breaking any laws. Um, there's no generally speaking, without any bylaws establishing when this happens, it would be done on the first meeting of the calendar year. Um, so if, I don't know what the commission's bylaws say specifically about when this is supposed to be done, but I would say that perhaps as a, unless one of the members has object, an objection, given that some of your members haven't yet been sworn in and you don't have everybody here, generally speaking, people wouldn't vote on that until they had a full complement of commissioners anyway. So I would say you table it to the next meeting it to clarify the bylaws and make sure you have all potential members available to vote.
That's, that's, that's what I would like to do is table this. Uh, is there, uh, can I have a motion to table this until next meeting?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, Janet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. So most. Excuse me, all those opposed, just in case I missed anything. It didn't sound unanimous. I think it was. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Janet, for that uh, procedural input. Okay, so now we open it up to uh, public comment, uh, limited to topics that are not uh, currently on the agenda, which come to a public hearing and discussion on an application and the uh, uh, the application based on the public hearing. Um, I open it up to the uh, public at large. Whether it's electronic hand or a hand waving at me. Count to thirteen. And none. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item four, bills. Uh, we have one from the Chronicle for posting for our um, hearings and hearing results. Um, the other that isn't on the list there is one from Recording Secretary uh, for her efforts for uh, the September meeting. So those two bills are there. Correspondents. We had two correspondents from the where's my pile of papers? Here we go. From the Mansfield uh, Planning and Zoning Commission referrals. One of those, uh, PZ File 907-65 are changes to zoning regulations related to agriculture. And those will be discussed at their December 1st meeting at uh, 6:10, a hybrid meeting at the Mansfield Town Hall. The other referral was PZ File 90771, and those were changes to zoning regulations related to a number of items, including uh, residential uses, similar uses, and definitions. And again, to be discussed in more depth at the December 1st meeting at the Mansfield Town Hall. Again, a hybrid meeting if anyone wants to attend those and find out more. That's it. Okay. That leads us to the next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing for PZ-25-5 regarding a special permit application per our regs of 300-33 for a cluster subdivision at Zero Ferentz Road. Owner is Steve Krucoff. And uh, the hearing procedure for all those in attendance will be, we will hear from the applicant uh, with a summary of proposed, of the proposed application, any pertinent new or supporting information they wish to share. Uh, we'll then open it up to questions from the commission members to the applicant uh, regarding the application. We will then open it up to public testimony. And again, I remind everyone that this is a hearing to gain input from both the applicant and the public for the commission's use in rendering a decision. I want to remind everyone that it's not a back and forth interaction, uh, nor is there a town vote on this. This is in the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, statements and questions for consideration are to be directed to the commission and/or the chair specifically. Uh, we ask that such testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. If you wish to speak again after your timeframe, we'll come back to you around once all speakers have had an opportunity to give their input. And then the commission will have an opportunity to uh, request uh, authentication of any testimony and/or have further questions of the applicant. And then lastly, the applicant will have the final statement before we were to close the, should we come to an situation where we're looking to close the hearing at that point? So, uh, at this point, I'll open it up to the applicant or the applicant's representative, uh, the developer. Do we have them on here, Steve? I can't quite see.
Yes, I am here. Paul Archer with Archer Surveying.
I thought I saw you up there in the corner. Sorry. Coming up in big bold letters, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
No problem. Thank you.
Floor is yours.
So we're, we're dealing with a piece of property that is, and I don't know if you guys have a map that you're gonna, can you put up and share with everybody or?
Uh, Mike does. What, uh, what, uh, did you want? Did you want the uh, full site map?
Well, we could, let me start with a pre, a little brief summary going on that a month or so ago, uh, month, month, two months ago, we were before you showing you and asking you which way the commission was actually being favored, whether they want to go to this open space cluster subdivision or stick with six conventional, you know, lots. And we had put the depicted out there that showed that we had the ability to get six original lots or this way. And I, and I believe the commissioner, the commission was in favor of going with the cluster open space subdivision, how that looked.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. That's what I was gonna ask for.
So that was the original, that was us demonstrating that we are able to get six conventional lots according to your regulations out there, which now allowed us to go into the open space close cluster subdivision, which allowed us to put a much smaller footprint on each of these lots. Okay?
So again, just to, just to be clear that that is the conventional two acre per lot um, allowable development of that land. Uh, as a, again, uh, following the conventional residential agricultural regs for a housing project.
That is correct.
Okay.
So then like we got the feedback from you, from your commission, which kind of led us in to this direction here. So here we are in front of you. It's a little over a 12 acre lot, you know, size. It's, everybody drives by it now. It's a hay field existing with one single barn, barn on the, on the property. And Steve Kirkoff now is looking to divide this into six lots, allowing us to keep, we're gonna be, we're proposing to keep six and a, little over six and a half acres into an open space, you know, easement is the easiest word to say with, with covenants covering that, which I had submitted a draft copy of the covenants to be put onto the open space. We've gone through this. We went through all the soil testing. We have gotten back the approval from the Eastern Highlands for septic systems that they concur that this, these lots are definitely feasible to house a septic system with the houses that we show up there now. We have also gone through, we presented this to the, your inland wetlands commission.
It's just begun.
Excuse me, can you make you sure, make sure you're on mute if you're a part of the community here? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Archer.
So thank you. So we, we presented this to the inland wetlands commission, even though all our, all that we're, all the development that we're proposing is outside the wetlands area and is also outside their hundred foot upland review area. So, but still according to the state that we do have to present to them and for them to notice you that, you know, we have done so. We've also sent this on to the fire commission. And he, he put his little input in, input in, and what they were, would like us to do is if you look down in the northeastern corner, southeasterly corner, I'm sorry, we're proposing a dry hydrant be installed into this pond with a, with a paved driveway being proposed there to allow the fire trucks to back up to the fire hydrant to allow us to do that. Um, I believe your regulations state that anything that's over, I believe it's five lots, has to have some sort of fire prevention, fire prevention areas here that allowed an area of water consumption of 15,000 gallons, which we sat down with the fire marshal and went over that. And the pond is more, is more than significant in holding the amount of water to help with the fires down the roads. And he asked, this is what he asked for, and this is what we put on the plan, revised the plan and proposed. So now, if you can zoom back out, Mike, a little bit, so we can see the whole. So as you can see, what we're proposing is we're gonna have three of the, three of the houses will come off of Hanuth Road and three of the houses were gonna be coming off of Furnace Street, the, the state road. One of the driveways is already there. It's, it's the driveway that is used for the existing barn. Okay, that's gonna be right there. They were gonna propose that we continue to use that driveway to circle up to the house. The other two curb cuts are there. We have done the sightline demonstrations and we meet all the criteria for the sightlines. We, um, I'm trying to think, and then on that, that would be on the state road. So on the town road is the same thing. We have adequate sightlines going forth. There we have, the other thing that we have done is we've gone ahead and we have set notices out and we have posted the placards on this for this hearing for tonight and sent it to all the butters, I believe, and all, everything's been forwarded to Mike to have that. So I think there's not a, it's a hay field. Everybody that drives by it now would understand this, that the Kirkoffs have been haying this for years. And I think this sets up as a really nice demonstration that we're not just gonna come in and butcher the land. We're, we're we're using the cluster housing to its best ability, you know, putting the housing close together and leaving a big six and a half, you know, open space around it. Now, all the lots are just about an acre. So they're not super small lots. They're not three quarter of an acre lots. They're all, I think one of them. Yeah, lot one is an acre. Lot two is a little over an acre. Three is a little over an acre. Four, a little over an acre. Five, a little over an acre. And six, the actual buildable area there is just about an acre, but six, lot six is where the existing barn is. So that lot there is gonna own the open space that's behind it. All right. So I, and we've note, we've denoted that it's just an easement line around the barn. Okay, so that whole six and a half acres will go with that parcel six, which has got the existing barn on it. And I think that's pretty much of a quick, quick summary of what we're planning to do out there. I believe it's a really good fit for this, that we're, we're still keeping the agricultural use there, but allowing some, some development there also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Archer, for that. Um, so uh, in trying to digest this and all the plans that we've received and everything, and I appreciate the, uh, uh, the nature of giving us the before, uh, the conventional along with what you're submitting to us. Um, and I think we had it both in a clear view uh, before all the development and then the view that's up now with all the proposed structures and uh, wells and septic and such and driveways and everything. Uh, it's very helpful to us. So now I open up to the commission, uh, commission members, any questions of uh, Mr. Archer and the proposed development here? Again, we had the opportunity to see this two months ago. Uh, we all, it was pretty much unanimous of our feeling that the open space development would be uh, appreciated and fall in line with a lot of the goals and objectives of uh, our zoning here in Ashford. But uh, again, I open it up to the commission. Janet, did you have a question?
Yes.
You just, you just came up first on my thing, because I think you came off.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Actually, um, we had discussed, I believe that the open space could continue to be used for haying or agricultural use.
That's correct.
And um, the, the Declaration of Permanent Restrictions and Covenants that you sent to us prohibits um, agricultural use and also mentions the town of Brooklyn. So
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you sent us the wrong one.
So can I jump in here?
Please go ahead, Mike.
So, um, I sent the easement to the town attorney to review because anything that is gonna be filed on the land records would, would go through them to, to clarify. So he um, is reviewing it and has some um, some comments and some suggested edits. So that would be something that if this went forward, you know, I would ask that the commission sort of include a condition that, that the final language be subject to review by the town attorney. In short, he was comfortable and, and good with the approach of replacing the easement and allowing the agricultural use. He just wanted to make sure from a long-term perspective that it was sort of easy to understand and also so that future owners or someone down the road that doesn't have the background of this presentation understood. So he had some suggestions and was gonna provide basically a red line. So I think that, yeah, what's in front of you was provided by the applicant to sort of get the ball rolling as far as how we would achieve that easement, but I would sort of, my preference would be that the final language be subject to review by Colin Sage.
So if you take that as an example, Janet, of what they're submitting, and then it's gonna go through our lawyers to uh, put in language that fits along with the two, two of the items that you mentioned too, the, the fact that it should be town of Ashford. And second, it should be uh, include, include the agricultural uh, use.
Oh, thank you.
Did you have anything further on that, Mr. Archer?
Uh, no, I didn't. I mean, we had sent some samples in there and I'm of the sample that I have in front of me doesn't mention Brooklyn or we had, I know we had removed some other, not so I don't know really, I'd have to. But we're open to any suggestions.
Maybe we grabbed the wrong one. I don't know if you said multiple samples, but whatever comes back from our lawyers, we'll, we'll work with.
We're gonna use, yes.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yes, Jerry.
I just had a question about the uh, the open space land. It's about six acres roughly. Um, is that something that they might develop later on for other houses?
My quick answer to that would be no. And it, it's six and a half acres and this, and that's what the whole Declaration of Permanent Restriction and Covenants would be, would be there to, to us basically say there'll be no development of this six and a half acres.
Okay.
And that, and if, if you have the opportunity to review that uh, declaration, what you see, Jerry, is that it's not only the current owners, but any subsequent owners uh, as go, it goes with the land. It goes with the deed.
That's correct.
Okay. And my other question is uh, the size of the houses that would be built on these lots?
Right now, we're proposing, you know, three bedroom houses, right? And in understanding that what, what we're showing you, what we're doing here is we're demonstrating to you that a residential home can fit on these lots with meeting your setbacks, meeting the health department requirements. Now, also be known that every one of the lots that the proposed development will require what is called an engineered septic system. And an individual site plan for each of the lots will have to be performed, sent back to the health department, and then it would go through your process, through your building inspector, through your zoning department, and so on. So this, what we're doing to you right now is demonstrating that these lots can be, can be built on. So the squares that we show on there are just a depiction of a house, but somebody who buys that lot could come in and have a total different configuration of a house. It could be a little larger or it could be a little smaller.
Okay. Oh, I just have two other questions. Uh, the barn is gonna stay?
Yes.
Okay. And uh, it's kind of a landmark. And the other question I had, the, the houses that will be on driveways onto Ferentz Road or Route 89. That would be a downhill driveway, a couple of them?
Yes.
And uh, about the drainage, the water going into the road?
There would, there would be very minimal, what we're doing, and if you, if you look at it, there's a series of um, what you wanna call French drains throughout these that is collecting all the water before it reaches the road. So very minimal, if any water will reach the state road.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
I said, thank you, Jerry, to myself as I was on mute. Uh, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I have, um, I have some questions about water. Um, and, and, and the first, I think in, in looking at this, I without a heck of a lot of, of background information, I, I just have an intuitive concern about is there sufficient water supply for six closely spaced houses here? So I'm wondering if, um, with the existing property, if anyone has done some sort of a pump test to know what the, the water supply could be within the area where these six houses are? And then I have some follow-up question, but maybe you want to address that one?
Um, I'm not really quite sure what the question you're asking. A pump test as for drinkable water or fire hydrant? I mean, I don't quite understand what you're asking.
A, a pump test would be in, in hydrogeology to demonstrate sufficient water supply at, you know, 10 gallons per hour for six houses, something like that.
No, nothing like that has been done.
All right. And then kind of related to it, I'm looking at this site plan. I noticed the 75 foot radius extends beyond the properties for all of these six. Some of the 75 foot radius extends onto Knapp Road. Some of them extends onto the septic system of their own or other properties. And I just wonder if that is the best placement and arrangement for all of this? Or if other options could be pursued? Because it seems like you're, you're preparing for those future homeowners to have problems.
Well, the, your well arc radius, you don't have a regulation in your in your regulations that state that the 75 foot well arc, well arc radius has to be on, on its own property. But what it does, the well arc radius has to do is it has certain criteria that the health department looks at as to what is within that radius. And like I said, we have, the health department has reviewed this and the health department has given us a letter stating that they concur that what we are demonstrating here is feasible and meets the health code.
Just for my own edification, I'm sorry, just for my own edification, what art are we talking about? Is that the larger circle or the smaller circle?
Larger circle.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, since there's a, a gap of silence here, um, I did speak to Lynette Swanson at Eastern Highlands earlier today about this. Just to confirm, so she has performed um, a subdivision plan review on this and, and um, concurs with the layout. The well, um, the 75 foot well uh, circle that you see on the plans, you know, the, as, as she put it, that the, the purp, the purpose of that is to demonstrate that there are no demonstrate that there are no points of potential contamination within 75 feet of the well. So, so it's not about property lines or, or anything to do with whether or not a piece of property will perk at a certain rate for well or, or septic, et cetera. It's really to show that they can place these, these wells on the proposed lots in a manner that does not put a so, a source of potential pollution within the 75-foot distance. I asked her about the whether it is common or encouraged or required that applicants look into endeavor or otherwise test for the suitability or ability for a piece of property to support any type of development ahead of time. And she says that, she said that, that in almost no case would someone is put in a well ahead of a development. But that the Department of Consumer Protection has had requirements for how how much water a well must yield for the, the, the current requirements have been in place for, for almost 50 years. And so there's a certain amount of yield that, you know, gallons per minute that a well will have to demonstrate once it's drilled that it, that it can generate. And additionally, there's a certain number of gallons of storage that it'll have to provide. So you know, she, she said the minimum being at a, at a total depth of like 600 feet, you'd need to provide more than one half gallon of yield and at least 75 gallons of storage. So there are standards that they have to meet, but they aren't something that's demonstrated at the sort of engineering stage.
Let me follow up. Do we have any of that documentation, documentation from Eastern Highlands?
So we, th- those are standards from the Department of Consumer Protection. So they would see that as part of the, the final review that comes from the well completion report when the well driller obtains their permit to drill the well, but they're not, they're not local requirements. And, and so she determines and reviews to see that that's been provided, but they're not, they are not requirements that Eastern Highlands administers.
And, and, and maybe I'm just being dense and tired already, but like one of the properties 75 foot is underneath another property septic tank. Two of the properties have their 70-foot line go out onto the road. So I'm just, I have some, you know, just, I'd like someone to help me understand this better.
So which parcel are you saying shows the septic tank coverage?
The far northeast property has, what I'm assuming is labeled otherwise as a septic tank is within the 75-foot radius of the property immediately to the south of that.
Far northeast.
Yeah.
So it's not this large.
I see your mouse. Go right to your right there. If that's your hand is the mouse mic, yeah, right there. What's that little box with the two dots in it?
He is correct. I, I see what he's saying. If you cut down, I think it's number three. If you zoom in there, I can see where that is. But
So
Yes.
I may be really missing something, so I really, I'm asking earnestly. I just want someone to help me understand.
That should, that, if, that should be moved outside of, it should come over where the word septic system, septic tank is. That's where, that's where the, the actual tank belongs is right there. So it would be outside of the two 75-foot radiuses. But again, understand that these, these are not design plans. These are conceptual plans stating that these can be conceptually developed. So what, when we would have to come back in for an actual zoning approval, planning approval, we would have engineered designed septic systems, which that would have to be, that septic tank right there would have to be moved outside the two 75-foot radiuses. You are correct.
And, and the point about the two that are overlapping the
It, that overlapping property lines and roads doesn't have any bearings on that. It looks at like the point of contamination for the wells is what it looks for.
Can you, can you define point of contamination for me?
That would be under the state health code. They're the ones that determine where if, like right now, if she thought that those well arc radiuses that the road had points of contamination on there, she wouldn't have given us an, you know, a, a approval right now saying that she concurs that the way this is laid out is feasible.
And I agree, I agree with you on that. I know that's the state health department would not make it. And again, it is conceptual at this point. To lay this out, but even at the one that Steve was just referring to, it's a matter of moving the box to where the septic tank label is.
Correct. That's correct.
Right. Are you, are you good, Steve?
I am, thank.
Okay, thank you. Janet?
Yeah. So some towns, some towns near us have had a lot of trouble with wells being contaminated by, you know, road salt and so forth. So it seems to me that putting the well so close to the road is, is not a, a very good idea for long-term. Even though it's a smaller road that maybe doesn't get as much salt on it, we still maintain the road in the winter.
But you've got to understand that these wells are, are drilled wells. A lot of your contaminated wells are probably hand dug wells. Okay? So this drilled well here is they run steel casing down until it hits the bedrock. Okay? So there is, it's a basically, it's a sealed unit all the way down into bedrock. So I mean, if it was a, the old, the old wells which were hand dug, which yes, there would be contamination from road salt, but I think for this right here, the high probability is, is not there because of the way that the wells are being drilled in the, you know, the, the steel sleeves going all the way down into bedrock.
Okay.
They don't even, if they seal it off that groundwater doesn't even get into these wells.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, I kind of think you'd hope it would get into the well.
I'm sorry?
I actually think you would hope that water would get into the wells.
Not groundwater. Yeah, we're, right. We want water to get into the wells, but not runoff from the top. Right.
Also, could you explain? I don't understand what the criteria is for needing a, an engineered septic.
The help, that is all felt based on the state health code. So what happens is we do, we run a series of tests out there to determine septic system size. Okay? The first test that we run is called a percolation test, which is a four-inch hole dug approximately 30 inches down and it's filled with water and the water is timed to see how well the water, how, how the ground is absorbing the water. Okay? The next test that are done, if you look on there, on there, they're called test pits. And that gives you the depth, that gives you the different layers that you can see all the way down. If there's ledge, if there's groundwater, how much topsoil you have, how much sandy loam you have and all that. And an engineered septic system is determined if, if the restrictive layer in the deep hole is less than 36 inches, that it's an engineered septic system. So if my restrictive layer was 40, say 48 inches, I wouldn't need an engineered septic system. We could get away with a an installer's plan. So here's, uh, we've put in there, this is all the testing that was done on all those lots. And every single, if you look for the restrictive layer on there, or the other word they use is motlin. If it is less than 36 inches, that is, then the health department requires an engineered septic system. An engineered septic system, what it is, is a, is a design that gives you actual depth integrate for your inverts, for your D boxes, your tanks and, and how deep into grade your septic system can go. Your leaching field can go into the ground.
All right. Thank you for explaining that.
Anything else from the commissioners?
No.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, so at that point, we will open it up to uh, public testimony. Again, I simply ask that you raise your electronic hand or wave me down if I hadn't seen you wait to be called on. And, uh, uh, Mr. Gagowski will be first. I can tell on that. Go ahead, sir. You're on mute.
My name is Terry Glakowski. I live at 25 Nath Road. On that map, it was the upper left-hand corner across the street. Okay. And I would like, I've lived here since 2004. So I would like to urge the commission to veto this plan outright and use the standard two-acre zoning plan instead. Why? Because this will tend to disturb the rural character of Ashford, which we've lived in, I've lived in here since the early seventies down in Ashford Park when I was a grad student there. Okay, so this cluster will have the look and feel of an apartment complex, which I think has been banned in the state, in, in the city recently, or I don't know how long ago. So, so I would like to ask the question, where else in Ashford has the cluster subdevelopment been used anywhere, especially in, in recently? And I, once again, I would urge we use the standard two-acre development, which I've seen the plot plan for that, that seems reasonable. But these cluster, can you move the clusters over to the right side of that map? In other words, the southeast corner away from the existing properties on Nath Road? And what about the water table? Is this a cluster of wells going to deplete the water table for our well? Now, our, our well, I, I had to replace the pump. It's 750 feet down. And so I'm concerned about too much water coming out of all these other wells, lowering the water table for us. So all right, I guess that's all I have to say. But once again, I would urge you to veto this and use the standard development, two-acre development.
Thank you, Mr. Glakowski. And you said you were, you say you were
125 Nath Road?
At 25, 25 Nath Road, just 25 and that's on that map, it was in the, in the upper left-hand side across the street.
Yep.
Kind of on the northeast side of that.
Got it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes. Mister, I, I've, your name is familiar, Barclay?
Eric Kaylee.
Eric Kaylee, that's right. That was gonna be my second choice. I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I'd just like to voice my opposition to the proposal. I just purchased uh, the house at 40 Nath Road in November. And one of the things that brought me to this town was the rural aspect about it. You know, it's just a hayfield, but it's nice and it's brings character to the town that is, you know, it's getting harder and harder to find, especially in a market like this, you know? So I, I just have to say that I agree with Terry. I think the majority of the abutters to this proposal are also in opposition. So I just wanted to voice that.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Anyone else from the public community?
Hey Jeff, it's Paul Varga. I can't get my hand raised thing to work.
Okay. And I can't see you waving at me, so call me. That's fine. Go ahead.
I'm having some technological problems, right? First of all, I just want to say I spoke with this, as the fire chief, I spoke with Mr. Archer and Mr. Krukoff, uh, discussed the hydrant thing. Everything they have on that design plan meets the requirement of our regulations, actually exceeds it. And they've been very accommodating. We've talked about a couple of different things and I'm sure moving forward, we'll probably talk some more. As a resident of Ashford who owns a substantial amount of property and who is involved in agriculture, I don't like to see any hayfield go into building lots, but reality is people have to live somewhere. And the, I guess they will call it the standard six-slot subdivision where everybody gets two acres is an absolute nightmare. I think that the, this current proposal is far better for the town of Ashford and to keep our rural character. Yes, it moves houses closer together, but not really. And it also allows for that six-plus acres to maintain be open space and be usable open space. Where I am now on Zitek Road, just north of me, there's an old farm that was subdivided into two acre parcels. Everybody mows their acre and three-quarter and then they call me when they're tired of mowing it and I try to fit my big machine in there and mow their acre in, in three-quarters or acre and a half. It's ridiculous. This is a much better idea. It saves the open space. It saves the barn as of right now and it saves the pond, quite frankly. So again, as a farmer, I don't like seeing any hayfield go away, but the reality is people do need to live somewhere. We have a housing crisis. I think this is the best of both worlds. It solves two problems, keeps us rural and allows people to build reasonable houses in a, in an excellent spot, especially if they want to commute. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, I see Brian and Janet Barclay. Please share.
Thanks. I'm, I'm Janet Barclay and we're at 75 Ferentz Road. So we live right across from the barn. And like a few others have mentioned, I, my preference would be for it to not be developed at all. I appreciate the open space and the agricultural field and, and such. Also understand, like Paul was just mentioning, that there is a need for housing. An urgent need for that and that subdivisions are allowed. And then that's well within Steve's right to develop the land in that way. I think that the proposed cluster subdivision has a lot of ecological benefits. Maintaining the open space, maintaining the agricultural space, maintaining a larger area of wildlife connectivity and especially having it at the end of the, the proposed end of the property where it is now connects it with adjacent open space to the east and some corridors to the, the west. You know, we frequently see wildlife coyotes, we've seen bobcat, you know, and such kind of traversing there. I think that rural character is a bit subjective and I appreciate my neighbors' value for that. I think all of us that live in Ashford have a value for that. In my, from my perspective, there's a bit more rural character with clustered housing and larger areas of open space, whether forested or agricultural. You know, yeah, so that's, that's my perspective. And do you acknowledge that, you know, the, the proposed cluster development has a bigger impact on some of my neighbors' view out of their properties than it does out of ours, just because of where we are? A couple of questions I have in terms of the open space restrictions and I was wondering about, I mean, this was discussed earlier, but you know, there's agricultural uses that seemed restricted in the example, motorized vehicles were restricted in a way that would make it difficult to mow that field or whatever. And then I was also curious, there was a mention earlier Um, um, and then I was also curious, there was a mention earlier about those French drains. And the water diversion, um, and I was curious where those drains would be diverting the water to, whether that was just encouraging. Infiltration of that runoff, or if that was, um, if they were being diverted elsewhere. Thanks.
This is a good to speak as well?
Ditto, right, Mark? Thank you, thank you very much.
Um.
Uh, Brian, did you have something to add?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you were like, go ahead.
Um, first of all, thank you for contacting abutting landowners. We heard from Steve a year or so, a while ago that he was going to be selling, but had no idea it was in the process right now. Um, so appreciate that. And like Janet, you know, as mentioned, it's it's okay to build. Um, I think most of us right around it would love for it to not be, but acknowledge that that's allowed and okay. Um, if it were possible to build fewer, we might be more in favor of that. Um, and I guess I would encourage uh, Mr. Krukov to consider not only what's allowed, but what is most likely good for the people and environment here. After he moves, um, if he is selling here and and moving away. Um, the name and the history and the impacts will be felt by the neighbors on this call and um, in correspondence. Um, I am, while I appreciate space around each home, the two-acre thing, it does. End up dividing the environment more. Um, and so I actually prefer the uh, conservation easement concept. Um, it it does end up differential, like our neighbors on Nath Road would have um, view more affected and all that. Um. But yeah, if we could keep more of the land open and functional for hay, for whatever, for. We we know the animals go through there, the deer, the turkey, the geese, the coyote, bobcat, fox, we've seen all of those across the street on the hayfield. Um, couple of um, practical concerns, um, drainage, again with the French drains. Um, is it, could you put a map up of that lot, I mean, the the whole proposal?
Mike, you have access again?
Particularly, um, so we're on the downhill side. Our house is directly um, bu- across the road from the barn. About halfway between the barn and Nath Road, there is a drainage ditch that goes under the road onto our property. Um, so we get runoff from various storms. Um, there's a wetland on our side. We get some trash from the street. My concern is, depending what is built on the other side of the road, how that drainage will be handled. Will we we receive extra runoff with less permeability from whatever is built? Um, also, and for road maintenance, um, that stretch, um. Let's say right about where the word word road is next to Ferentz. Ev- over towards the barn, every winter, we've only been here three years so far, but each winter, um, there is seepage from the field. Onto the road, uh, when snow melts and whatever, and it refreezes at least halfway across the road. Um, you can check with road crews and get their observations. Um, there's been black ice there pretty consistently. So the drainage is something that will need to be addressed, uh, to keep it safe, because it's already an issue. And I don't know how that will be affected, say with more driveways or whatever. Um, the other question I have is about driveways, um, and how several driveways on Route eighty-nine. Where people are going really fast past this house, uh, past uh, this stretch. Um, they've come up the hill, they're moving pretty quickly. Anyway, um, so if it's possible. For more of those driveways to be shared, I would recommend that. Um, or if it were possible to share some onto Nath Road beyond just the one. Um, I wonder about that possibility. I believe my understanding is that with subdivisions, there's a preference for. Um, driveway accesses more on secondary roads, like the smaller roads. Um, so I guess I would address question or at least exploring that some more. Um, I also spoke with our neighbor, uh, Joe Lamb. Um, to our north, kind of off the the northwest corner. Um, and he similarly expressed, he knows people need places to live. Though he'd love it to stay open, he acknowledges that it's okay to build. Um, if it's possible to build fewer houses, that would be his preference. Um, and I think his leaning uh, was towards more open space, though I think there has been some confusion. Among some of the abutters of. What the impacts would be of cluster versus um, the traditional or the the more standard two-acre lots. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Barclays. Thank you for your input. Okay, um. Any other public comment at this point? Hold on, um, Mr. Glakowski, I just want to go around again here. See if there's anyone else. Uh, I'm gonna go, uh, I'll ask you to hold off. I'll go with the people who haven't spoken yet. Uh, I have a Minerva. Could you uh, state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Minerva, uh, Ranjit. I live at fifty-five Ferentz Road, and I'm here with my husband, Matt Coleman.
Hey, um, we're we're gonna second, um, pretty much what the Barclays said. Um, we're we're right next door to them. Um, I think most of the abutters are in agreement that if we had the option, we'd rather not have a development. But uh, if if they're gonna develop, I think the cluster is probably the way to go. Um, we like the idea of having the open land. Um, and also, people fly down that road, um, pulling out of our driveway. People are speeding down eighty-nine. I don't know how good an idea it is to have. Many more driveways on that stretch of road. Um, that's that's just our two cents.
Okay, I I I already shortchanged one couple. Anything from uh, Minerva on your side?
No, thank you. We got this.
Very good. Um, I did see that, uh, Joe Hendricks, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Um, I'm not gonna uh, take a stand uh, with regard to uh, the. Different designs for the development of this parcel. Um, I just would like to say, as the uh, incoming head of the commission, Conservation Commission. We would love for uh, you, um, and the Conservation Commission or the. The zoning, the planning commission to uh, help let us uh. Uh, make uh, make input into the uh, document, uh, the declaration. Uh, uh, of the the easement document. Um, uh, to address some of the issues that have been brought up already by the Barclays. And others as to how to, um, and by uh, Mr. Varga. Um, on optimizing the conservation value of what's being set aside. Um, so we would really like to, you know, along with the town attorney, uh, help with uh. Forming that with best, the coming up with the best uh, practices for that document. And we'd love to uh, consult with you guys.
Thank you very much. All right, waves is clear, Mr. Glakowski. You're up again.
Okay, I would once again like to reiterate that you that you use the two-acre standard zoning rather than the cluster zoning. And so I'd like to ask where, where in Ashford has the cluster zoning been used before? And uh, and can the cluster be moved farther south away from the properties on Nath Road?
Okay. Where? Else cluster. All right, thank you very much for your questions. Any other public comment? Oh, Sir Archer.
We're saving you till last, if you want.
I'll wait, I can be patient. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for the public comment. Uh.
I'll now ask if there are any other, uh, now that they've had some time to digest and hear some of the uh. Information from the public, is there anything from the uh. Commission members, uh. Whether it be of the applicant or anything that was brought up from the uh, public comment. Okay, thank you for your pay. Oh, I'm sorry, Janet, I took my hand away for a second, sorry, look down.
I couldn't get my mouse um, in time, um. Well, um, you know, Steve Pash mentioned uh, uh, water, I forget what he called it, water test, um. I I wonder if that would be appropriate, um. Since there, well, you know, you're adding a a a large number of houses to this area. Or how, I don't know how that works, or. Um, people do have some concern over the water, you know, water issues, and I know. All of us who live on wells, it's it's um, it is a, uh, uh, you know, vital concern for us. So I don't know if anyone has a. Answer to that question.
Well, from from what I've gathered from the information that Mike had shared and uh, Mr. Archer, I mean, again. Um, you don't put a well in uh, to a plan. You put your well in. Uh, you 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 put your well in and it gets approved by the health department for its the various tests and requirements and such. And if it doesn't meet those tests and those requirements, um, then the well is not acceptable. Uh, but one of the things is that it's using the same, as I understand it, it's using the same guidelines. That most of the houses that are already existing there, uh, their wells were put in under those same fifty-year-old. Uh, regulations from the consumer, um, excuse me, the uh. Forget what the group was. Uh. Da 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 da, yeah, Department of Consumer Regulations. Um, and anyway, Mike or Mr. Archer, please correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct. In order to have what's called portable water, is you have to meet certain criteria. Not only do you have to have volume, you have to, you know, the water's gotta be good. So they have to send it out to a a laboratory to have all your well, you know, all the water tested. And as for the test that she's talking about, I've never heard of it. I don't know what's involved in it. To see if there is enough water under there, I I don't know how to even answer that question. Can I answer some of the other ones that we roll in, or you want me to wait?
It's uh, unless I have another question from the commission at this point? Floor is yours, Mr. Archer, go right ahead.
And I agree, I don't remember a lot of the gentleman's name. I think it was Joe Hendricks. I think it's a great idea. If he's part of the Conservation Commission, that he's part of. What he puts in for this declaration for permanent restriction and covenants over the land. And one of the questions somebody asked was motorized vehicle. And what they're really talking about is an ATV track or a motorcycle track or any type of. You know, activity like that as a motorized vehicle, not necessarily a farm tractor. Okay, so that it would, that's the different clarifications of that.
If if I if I may, just for a second, I believe in looking at the uh, minutes from the September meeting, I believe. Uh, one of our commissioners, uh, Doug Jenny, who's not on right now, and is a uh, farmer as well as an engineer. Did bring that up, that it needs to be identified as, you know, uh, farming equipment. Is appropriate for both the new owner to be aware of, as well as the abutting owners, that you say, uh, it's an allowable use.
That is correct. And then the other thing that I think is very important to see is that. The one of the gentlemen talked about the water, the uh, water coming down the hill and getting onto the road. And I believe the state of Connecticut saw that problem and has built a swale. That goes along, and if you can see it along the edge of the road that collects the surface water, that goes into a catch basin. That's there. So I think the state has done a good job in reducing the water coming onto the road. Awesome. Um, trying to think of some of the other question. The other gentleman wanted to know if we could possibly slide the cluster. Down over to the northwest, northeasterly, nor southeasterly corner. That would be defeating the purpose of trying to conserve the land. That's where the pond is. That's where the the livestock is, that's where everything that you want to protect is in that corner. So this is the best corner. And as for the gentleman that wants to go back to the two-acre subdivision. That's the the whole purpose of the first meeting that we came down in front of you guys to determine. What you as the Planning and Zoning Commission thought would be the best use. Would it be the two-acre subdivision, or would it be the open space cluster subdivision? I think the open space cluster subdivision does a very good job in keeping the rural characteristics of Ashford. Because I think back in the day, they're one-acre lots, okay? There's not a lot of people that develop, need more than one acre to develop. Let's keep the greenery in the back and the open space in the back and keep all the development as tight as we can together. And keep the rural characteristics of it by keeping it open.
I think that one other question that was in there came from the Barclays had to do with uh, the drainage. You had talked about the French drains. And where does that, where does that go to? What's the plan for?
That a French drain is very similar to like a, your footing drain on your house. So it's gonna, it's a pipe that comes out onto daylight and will stay on the surface, but it's collecting all the water there. But the way it is designed right now is to keep the majority of the water onto each person's property.
And it and it just uh, is impervious, it's pervious, it goes into the the land. Um, I can't think of any of the questions I did. Before we go away, I will touch base with uh, Norah. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to make a comment about a question that Janet had about water and wells. Uh, years ago, when I was considering moving to Ashford and buying this lot where my house is now. I stopped at the town hall and asked them, what are the chances if I drill a well, so that I would have acceptable water? And I was told then that there's never been a dry hole in Ashford. And that convinced me that I would be, uh, that it would be okay. And then it turned out. We drilled a well, it was two hundred and fifty feet deep, and we got three gallons a minute, and the water is wonderful. Non-odorous mineral water, odor-free mineral water. It's really good, good quality water, so. Uh, that's just a personal reaction that I had, and the answer I got from the town hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Nor. Okay, anything else, Mr. Archer? Anything else you'd like to share or uh, put out there?
Not that I have, unless there's any more questions.
Um. Mr. Gagowski, I'll I'll allow for one more time. We've gone through the public comment, but go right ahead.
All right, I I asked the question is, where else in Ashford has the cluster subdivision been used? And I've not heard any answer or even acknowledgement of that question.
Well, again, in most cases, we don't do a, as I said earlier in the beginning, we don't do a back and forth when it comes to the public um, comment. Back and forth, we can, we will have a discussion on that when we deal with this in our meeting under the uh, uh. Commission business, uh, which is the next section we deal with once we're through with the hearing. Anything else? Commissioners? Mr. Archer? Okay, all right, having that um, come to an end, I guess, uh, with nothing outstanding out there. Uh. I would move that we close the hearing. And uh. I always forget this, Mike. Do I need a motion to close or just close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Do I have a, do I have a motion to close the uh?
Motion to close.
Motion to close from Jerry. Is there a second?
Janet, second.
Janet, seconds. All those in favor of uh, closing the hearing on PZ. Dash two-five dash five for the. five for the special permit application for a cluster subdivision on Zero Ferentz Road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you to the public, thank you to Mr. Archer, we appreciate it, uh, we do take in, we do consider all the views that are shared with us, uh. Okay, so going on to commission business, under PZ dash twenty-five dash four, uh, application for six lot open space subdivision on Zero Ferentz Road, um. Mike, help me with the distinction on this again, I think you tried to walk me through it before and I'm too stupid, um. So this was the original application of the open space subdivision, uh, which was discussed at the pre-conference.
You're talking about based upon what's on the agenda?
Yes.
So, the, the the applicant, the, the subdivision regulations allow for that parcel to be split into six lots by right, no public hearing, no, you know, no, uh, consideration by the commission, it's as of right, and the commission has to act on it and issue an approval provided it complies within sixty.
So basically, so basically on that, we have no reason for a motion on that because it meets all the reg requirements and can be handled by the land use office?
You'd still, um, you'd still do a motion because you're still having to take action, but the, but because this, the regulations require a separate special permit, um, for the, the cluster subdivision, you sort of have to act on them separately, so in theory, you could deny the cluster subdivision special permit and request and essentially approve the conventional subdivision, um. So you have to take them separately.
So should we do with B first and then A?
Um, sure, yeah, you should, why don't you do it that way?
Okay, all right, uh, so just I need a motion to change, uh, the order on the agenda to move up item seven B onto the agenda before considering item A, is there a motion to move up that item?
Uh, this is Steve, I'll move to, uh, move B to A under.
You, Steve, is there a second on that?
I'll second it, Janet.
Janet seconds, all those in favor, say aye, all those opposed? Abstentions? So moved, okay, so B becomes the first item to deal with, PZ dash twenty-five dash five, special permit application per three hundred dash three-three for cluster subdivision at Zero Ferentz Road, owner Steve Krukoff. Uh, so this is the commission's discussion on, uh, both the, um, uh, applicants input as well as the public input, um. Share away, please. What do you got?
All right, I'll start.
Why, thank you, Janet.
Um, just trying to get my thoughts together, so a cluster subdivision is, is really considered a, a, a good way for towns to develop because as, as Chief Vargas said, it doesn't eat up so much space and it leaves open space. And the Barclays noted how important that is for local wildlife. Um, it protects the pond, it actually has fewer driveways on eighty-nine than the, um, the conventional two-acre lots, um. I see, you know, large lots end up being an acre of lawn, and then people think they need to put, you know, herbicides or other things on them, so they have a perfectly green lawn and, um, it requires a lot of maintenance, um. So for a lot of reasons, I, I think the cluster development is, is a better, a better way to develop this. And it does leave us with, as people are concerned about the rural character, um, you know, you have this nice, still have this nice field and pond.
Okay, thank you. Nord?
I agree with what Janet said, that's all.
Okay, all right, um. I know one of the questions we had out there was, uh, do we have a cluster development? And I think if we do, it's all prior to our zoning, um, uh, from nineteen seventy-two, where you get into, uh, some of the, um, areas like out in Southworth and obviously around the lakes and such like that, uh. I know we had a, uh, gentleman approach us a number of years ago, um, this was prior to Mike and Tyke working with us about doing a cluster development, I just can't remember where it was. And again, a lot of the same positives came up with that, it struck me and it stayed with me about the, uh, maintaining open space, reducing down impervious service, uh, surface, um, reducing down, uh, the, uh, what would be non, not natural, uh, development of, you know, the lawns and sidewalks, and then you get into, you know, putting in your, your decks and your development and things like this, uh, which obviously would be somewhat smaller in many cases, um. One of the other things that came up, obviously, I think was one of the bigger things, was the drainage and the concern about drainage on that, and I do know that in our regs, when it comes to the sub, the subdivision, uh, and the open space, uh, we, at least in our regs, we require inspection of, uh, that development and working with the developer when it comes to, uh, 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 inspecting these different stages of, uh, and how that development would cause different types of runoff characteristics and, uh, uh, again, not leading to habitat, aquatic habitat problems or, uh, property damage or anything like that. So we would want to work, the town would want to work closely with, uh, including Public Works with, uh, the developers on the, uh, and I can see Mr. Archer shaking his head up appropriately up and down, so happy to see that, um. And, uh, what was the other thing? Oh, um. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Yeah, and I can see where movement of that, uh, development isn't, would eat away at the open space. And again, even when they approached us originally, the commission was much more in favor of open space, um. I'm sure the conservation commission is in favor of open space, and going back to what, uh, Joe Hendricks offered up, um. Mike, if we were to have them give input, would they send that input to you and then share it with our, um, council?
Yeah, so I, I can now or after, if there's other commissioner comments, I can read through some of the conditions that I've kind of been notating as you have been discussing, and you can tell me if the, um, way I've written them captures, I think what was discussed or the question or concern that was raised.
Well, more so, more so, I'm thinking about, you know, should, um, what the conservation commission would want to share.
Yeah, I've been, so I've incorporated that request into the motion.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
In a way that I think works as far as a sequence and, and getting it reviewed.
I'm just looking at some of the notes I have down here, I'm trying to cover up, um, uh, you know, obviously in my book, uh, we want to maintain, uh, our rural character, if you will, however, since it's undefinable and it is, uh, quite subjective, the other thing is that we also need housing in town. There aren't enough houses for people to move into, there aren't who want to share in this, um. It doesn't mean, maintaining a rural character doesn't mean you don't develop. Uh, you develop right is what you do, and that's what both the P O C D that I know a number of the commissioners as well as myself have been working on for months and months and months, uh, doesn't mean you just stop, because if you stop, then your town is not going to go anywhere. You need development in certain areas, and it just so happens that this, a person has a right to develop the property that they have, um, and if they follow the regs and go through, um, again, I'm, I'm just, not to tip my hand too much, but I'm just very much in favor of this open space and allowing, uh, having it fit, uh, so people and, uh, animals, habitats and such can continue to enjoy the space. There's my two cents, uh, any other commissioners which to weigh in, Steve, Mark?
Mark Sch noble, um, I concur with, uh, Janet, um, I'm, I'm in favor of cluster housing and leaving open space, in fact, um, working on the next P O C D, that was one thing that we did discuss was, um, cluster housing and encouraging the use of cluster housing over traditional subdivisions, so in, in my, in my opinion, I think this fits perfectly into the direction we're hoping the town goes in the future.
Uh, and to give, thank you, Mark, and to give, uh, full disclosure, we did receive a letter of opposition uh, with, uh, approximately fourteen abutters, uh, signing that, uh, letter of opposition, uh, and while I fully understand their input, um, when something that's submitted to us meets the regulations, both from a normal state of, uh, conventional regulations as well as meeting the special permit requirements, um, it's, it's, it's not a vote, it's a matter of what the commission, uh, both has to weigh, uh, in on. I know some people had said some things like, um, uh, well, it will bring in more people, it'll bring in families, that'll bring in kids to go to this, our school and things like this. That's not a consideration for planning and zoning, um, I mean, it might or it might not bring in. Uh, it could bring in, uh, dinks, uh, double income, no kids, uh, and just, you know, additional, uh, tax. We can't even consider the tax revenue of it, really, um, it's not in our purview to deal with that. It's really what is in our regs right now, what, uh, what suggestions might need to be in our regs for the future and, um, what is compliant, and, uh, that's really what we're dealing with right now. So, um, uh, Jerry?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, a green boxer. Okay, seeing nothing else from the commission, any other discussion on the commission from, uh, what they saw or any responses to what was raised by the public? Okay, very good, to that point, uh.
Jeff, do you want me to read through my?
Yes, do I have a motion that sounds like what Mike's about to share with us?
Well, let me read through what I have and, and you, the commission can jump in if they think that I've missed captured or missed something.
Sure, go right ahead.
And just to some of the comments about, about the lot size, I, I just wanna, I was looking through some data that I had from the assessor, um. I, I just want to kind of point out that the town has only had zoning since the seventies, so, so there's a, a very strong possibility that, that the majority of the housing stock that the people participating in this meeting are sitting in was built prior to zoning. Um, we have around three thousand parcels in Ashford and, um, about seven hundred, a little more than seven hundred of them are less than two acres. That's not to say they all have a house on them, I'm just looking at broad data based on what I was able to pull. Um, a, a number of lots are less than the two acres and they have gotten that way for in many different reasons or for, in many different, through many different paths, but we do have a number of lots that are, um, less than the two acre minimum, um. So I have, um, total of seven conditions that I think reflect what we've discussed. Um, condition one, um, is requiring a copy of the approval and of this approval and relevant Eastern Highlands Health District approval be incorporated into the final Mylar before chairman's signature, um. Unless otherwise modified by the commission, uh, the existing barn depicted on proposed lot six shall be maintained for a period of at least five years following development of lot six. So obviously that barn is shown as to be maintained, we don't have anything, you know, historic or otherwise where we can demand that it be maintained in perpetuity. Um, but I think that given the way that, that everything was presented, it, it should be maintained at least through the construction of the, that lot, um, so that, you know, immediately following approval of this application, it's not demolished. It's going to be included as part of the conservation portion of the lot, but I, I think that to be consistent with what we're trying to achieve in the conversation and what's been represented here, I think that for at least a period of time, the future owner of lot six should have to maintain that barn, um. Number three, the, uh, the plans shall be revised to correct, uh, to reflect the corrected location, uh, the septic tank location on lot two. Um, uh, four, this approval shall be valid for a period of five years in accordance with Connecticut general statutes. Five, a draft of the proposed conservation easement shall be provided to the conservation commission for comment. So they're not a, an agency that has a, a hand at actually approving this application, so we can't say it's, we refer to them for their approval, but what we can do is provide them with the language, get their feedback and then incorporate that in our final review with the town attorney. Um, which then rolls into comments, or condition six, which is that the final language of the proposed conservation easement shall be subject to final review and approval by the town attorney. And then to address the concerns raised during the hearing about Ferentz Road, um, without having anything actionable, but also um, recognizing it probably wasn't, um, invented. Um, additional site grading and drainage may be required by town staff at the time of individual approval for lots five and six to prevent drainage from entering Ferentz Road. So if we, if we determine when we get the final site plans for those two lots, that there is a a drainage or icing issue, as was explained during the hearing, um, then, then we may ask them to do a little bit of drainage or, or grading in those areas. It may likely be covered because there's going to need to be encroachment permits obtained by DOT for those driveways, but you know, we don't want to engineer something that we, we don't know to exist at this point, but we also want to protect should there be a problem, um, so that gives us the opportunity to review those when they come in for permits for five and six, and then if we see there's an issue, we can say, hey, you gotta address this or tweak that.
Mike, when it comes to, um, it's, it's just struck me again that this is a state road. When it comes to those issues of encroachment and, uh, the drainage and work by, does it fall under our DPW or does it fall under the state?
It falls under the state.
It does.
Yep, so if, if it was within the right of way, then the, the state's going to approve the driveway, they're going to have to show that the driveway locations meet the state standards based on their line of sight, et cetera. Um, and so if there are issues or the DOT is concerned about that curb cut shedding water onto Ferentz, then they will require they do any number of things, but, but if we have an issue where it's coming not from the driveway, but just because the toe of the slope is there or whatever, we just want to make sure we can address it, and that's probably like a, that's something that you do in the field based upon what we observe, so just kind of want to capture that if something does come up.
Okay, and could you repeat number four for me, please?
Um, yeah, I can share my screen, um, it's, four was that the approval shall be valid for a period of five years, um. So subdivisions are valid for five years, they have to come back for an extension, but statute gives them five years.
Five years to complete.
Five, yeah, and, and in this case, I don't know, it would be related to public improvements or the requirements with the subdivision not to build all the houses. So there's not a lot here in the way of roads and all that stuff, obviously, but the, the initial timeline is, is for five years, so I guess in this case, the, the most important thing would be that, you know, getting the easements filed and then looking at the dry hydrant. So if they don't do those things within five years, they'd have to come back to get reapproval. So that would be like what we did with Lakewood's.
And is that why the?
Existing barn, you have a five-year also, that it goes kind of hand in hand?
Um, I, I, that sounds like really good and you're putting a lot of, uh, intellectual power in my, in my intention. I thought that, you know, it was reasonable to assume that, that, that by the time this gets taken care of, the house gets built and that property owner sort of gets their head, hands around the fact that they're going to have this easement, which will likely and hopefully be, be managed by a third-party farmer or something. I figured that five years gives them enough time to kind of figure that whole thing out.
Okay, all right. Sorry, didn't mean to give you so much credit. That's okay.
Yeah, please. Do you want me to share my screen so you can see what I read?
Please, please, so the commission can see.
Is it big enough?
It is for me.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
You're muted, Jeff.
You saw me point. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Um, Mike, my, my concern, one of the other things that you might want to add into this is that the, the proposed conservation easement should be filed probably before the Mylars or simultaneously with the Mylars? Or do you want that filed at a different time?
So I, I did think about that. The the statute's going to require that the plans be signed and filed within, you know, the, the ninety days or unless you request an extension. Hopefully it's not the case, but you know, we, we all know that, let me say it a different way. The area of the subdivision that will be subject to the easement is defined. We know what that will be. So I just don't want to be in a situation where by the time we get the language, we get comment from conservation, reviewed by the town attorney, et cetera. I don't want that to be putting you under the gun. So I was, I was thinking, since we all know where the easement will be, that we would let that drive statute and then have the easement filed once we understood and all agreed on the language, but.
Okay. And I'm just trying to think of the best way because maybe that lot six won't be sold or developed until the conservation easement is in place?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, the, the, so you're saying you want to, you want to.
I don't care. It's fine the way it is there, but I'm just trying to look out that, you know, that the conservation easement gets put up, doesn't fall behind a year or so, you know, that it could, it has to be put on timely manner with the Mylars.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that we could certainly let it all follow that ninety day timeframe. And then, you know, we could do it with, get the extension. I see what you're saying. That if we know everything, we can have it reflected on the final plans, which I think would be ideal. I just don't want to, I didn't want to tie up signing of the Mylars based on some language between, you know, everybody trying to give comment. But I will, I will will, I'll consult with the town attorney and we'll, we'll just endeavor to make sure we get it all done in the ninety days.
Perfect. Thank you.
Would that be something you need to add to number six? Or you just want to play it by the ninety days, Mike?
The way that I considered it is because this is all part of it that, you know, if we get to ninety days and it's not done, then he could come to you as others have and request the additional ninety day extension. I'd rather just lump it all together and say, you got to do all the things you got to do within the timeframe by statute, just so it's simpler. But if folks disagree, we can certainly add it.
Any input from the commissioners on this? Any concerns, any edits? Hearing none? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the application for a special permit? With the conditions as outlined by the zoning enforcement officer? That were just shared with the commission?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry seconds. All those in favor of the special permit application? Being approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Congratulations, Mr. Archer. Is there anything else we can do for you?
Now you're muted.
You still got a vote on the other one.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mike. So we have accepted the special permit. So just make a motion for accepting the open space subdivision?
Yes, I would just say, you know, to, to clarify that this is the motion to accept the six lot open space subdivision in accordance with the revised plans and P Z twenty-five dash five. Which is the special permit application.
Right. Okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve the application for the six lot open space subdivision. Contingent upon the recent approval of P Z twenty-five dash twenty-five, the special permit for zero Ferentz Road.
So moved.
Is there a second? Jerry, Jerry moved. Is there a second?
Janet, a second.
Second. All those in favor? To signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, very good. Good night. Last item under commission business will be relatively short. It has to do with the review of the draft of the P O C D. We do have a draft document that's been provided by Tyke. It's nearly, it's, I don't want to call it a final draft, but it is a draft for the P O C D Subcommittee to get its hands on and edit appropriately. Providing those edits to Tyke to put in. They put in some great graphs for us to look at, some great maps and things. Updated a lot of the information. So we're just going through it right now. In the hopes of having it available for the commission in December to actually have a copy for you to review and then act on in December to move forward with. We will have to try and make some special requests of maybe the selectmen's office and N E C O G to try and shave off some of the sixty-five day allotted time they have to review it. I think we can get the selectmen's office to move quickly. It's a matter of getting N E C O G to either yea or nay, or just say, go ahead, do what you want. If they don't want to respond back to us. But if we can get that shaved off, then we can probably get this done in the January timeframe that we were hoping to make. Otherwise, it might go into those first couple of weeks in February until we can have a, the full hearing on it. But again, we are moving forward. It's, it's, it's coming together. It's coming together nicely. The commission has worked hard. And we should have, again, something for your hands before the December meeting to review and talk about. Janet, Mark, do you have any input?
No, we, what's today? Monday. Last week, we made a few edits and cleaned up a few things, but it looks really good, I think.
I agree. No, I think it's coming together very nicely.
Couple, a couple of the nice things is that we did input, we did input a review every two years by planning and zoning. So that it's again, that, that living document, it's not something we go, holy, holy cow, we got to work on that. It's been ten years. We'll do a look at it every couple of years to get the updates in there. And again, I think we've talked about the fact that we've broken out some of the objectives. We broke them out, broke them out as individual sections, you know, whether it's governance or education or energy or whatever. They have their goals and objectives. And then the ones that are specific that planning and zoning can work on. I think we're calling them planning and zoning policy support. And the objectives that we can work with those different groups with to bring to fruition and finish off. So.
That's a short update we had. Mike, anything on zoning officer report?
The only thing that I'll mention is that, like, I guess Friday, the replacement housing bill for five thousand and two was sort of dropped. It's ninety-nine pages. The vote, I, I guess, I don't know which way it goes first, but the first vote is expected to be, I think, on the twelfth. There's a whole bunch of stuff in it. And it is taking out some of the quote fair share allocation. That was in the first round of the bill. I had heard there was some sort of crazy language about planning and zoning commissions being able to issue waivers, which I, I don't understand. But it, it's going to still require that towns prepare and adopt what are going to be called housing growth plans, which are going to dovetail or kind of be a metamorphosis of the affordable housing plan. There's going to be a lot more of a sort of a regional perspective. The, this is a special session. So there will be no public hearings held at the Capitol regarding this. These votes will essentially just take place. So what will be stripped out, who knows, or added and how this will change. But if anybody's interested, you shoot me an email, I can send you the language of the bill and a little bit of a breakdown. So we'll know more come December. If there's anything else that we have to stick into the P O C D based upon whatever final language this ends up looking to require when it comes to housing stuff.
Yeah, I know the, the first selectmen's office received a C C M letter. Again, the conference of cities and municipalities in Connecticut. And they did a quick summary talking about this and saying how some things like the, as it was described as that if you did develop affordable housing, you got a prioritization for steep grants and things like this. And some groups felt that that was a deprioritization. If you were not able to, like a small town like Ashford, that you weren't able to have a developer come in and start working with this. You were kind of behind the eight ball already. So they removed some of that language. It's not a, he does get it, he doesn't get it type of thing. And, yeah, also more on a regional basis, as Mike mentioned, the COGS, the Council of Governors, ours being N E C O G, you're more involved with that group taking a, a leading stance. And so I'm sure they will form some type of a committee of the towns to help with input and help with development of the plans and such, and do it on that regional basis as opposed to the individual towns being held more accountable. So some good things I think came out on that. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, that's all I got for now.
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
Nope.
No? Okay. First off, I apologize for my meeting not being as short as Janet's last month. I understand that went over really, really well. So maybe we should have her do it more often. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you for your input. And be safe, be well, and we'll talk again. Take care.